Good morning, everyone. I'm Kathy Martin, I'm the mayor of the village of Fishkill. I live at 20 Virginia Avenue, Fishkill, New York. Dear members of the IDA, we are ready to express our strong opposition to the proposed tax pilot payment move taxes agreement for the project Jackson Crossing LLC, a residential development planned for the village of Fishkill. While we understand the importance of incentivizing projects that bring economic benefits to our community, this particular project does not align with the intended goals of such tax incentives and raises several concerns. First and foremost, tax pilot agreements are traditionally intended to promote industrial or commercial development that generates long-term economic benefits, including job creation and increased revenue for the community. Residential developments such as the one proposed do not provide the same level of economic return. Instead, they often increase the demand for public services, such as schools, infrastructure, and emergency services, without adequately contributing to the tax base needed to fund these essential services. This is a 100% residential project. It is an upscale market rate complex. There is no affordable component. The village of Fishkill needs more moderately and more affordable priced housing. Second, granting a pilot to this development creates an unfair burden on existing taxpayers. By reducing the developers' tax obligations, the cost of maintaining community resources and services shifts to the local residents and businesses, many of whom are already facing financial challenges. This village has about 2,200 residents. When this project is completed, it will have increased the village's population by approximately 10%. As many other communities are experiencing, the village of Fishkill has had a dramatic increase in our ambulance cost. Our budgeted amount for ambulance went from about $20,000 a year to over $220,000 in one year. The cost has continued to rise ever since. The need to provide this service to our residents is imperative. A 10% population increase would most definitely impact our already skyrocketing costs. A pilot would increase the impact on our residents by causing tax shifts. Finally, approving a pilot for a residential project sets a concerning precedent. It signals to other developers that similar projects may also qualify for tax breaks, further eroding the community's tax base and undermining the original purpose of pilot agreements. Jackson Crossing is the only 100% market rate residential project listed on the IDA's website. We do not believe that this project is in alignment with the mission of the IDA. We urge the Dutchess County IDA to consider the long-term implications of this decision and to prioritize projects that are truly in sync with the mission of fostering sustainable economic growth. Residential developments should be required to contribute their fair share of taxes, just like all other property owners. Thank you for the time. Thank you for taking the time to consider our concerns. We hope that the agency will act in the best interest of our community by denying the proposed tax pilot for this project. And this letter is signed by myself as mayor and all of the trustees for the village of Fishkill, Deputy Mayor Nick Frallano, Trustee Anthony Ruggiero, Trustee Anne Machado, and Trustee Danielle Hughes. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is John Foreman. I'm a member on the Fishkill Town Board, and I reside at four Overlook Court in the town of Fishkill. I'm speaking today, asking the IDA Board to reject the requests for mortgage tax and sales tax relief, as well as any pilot associated with this project. I'm a believer in property rights. However, I don't believe this specific project checks all the boxes that would qualify the developers for this type of tax relief. The original proposal included some commercial development in addition to residential apartments. Commercial development would have brought permanent jobs to this location. But the commercial component was eliminated largely due to the lack of off-street parking. This project turned into a 100% residential development, a 100% market rate residential development. There are no affordable apartments included in this proposal. And why not? At the November IDA Board meeting, that very question was asked by a board member to the developer. And the answer given was, because there wasn't a requirement by the village of Fishkill. Well, you know what? There is no requirement that the IDA Board provide this development significant mortgage and sales tax relief, as well as approving a pilot, which will negatively affect the village and town of Fishkill. Again, I believe in property rights, but I don't think the taxpayers should dip into their pockets to provide financial aid to this type of development, a development that produces zero permanent jobs. If the numbers don't work without taxpayer assistance, then perhaps the developers should reconsider how they want to move forward. Thank you.
My name is Brian Ryde, F D R Y D, I live 21 Florence Avenue, Fishkill, two blocks away from the development. I have the rise in support of the mayor and the comments that John Foreman just made. You know, for disclosure, I'm on several committees around the county, a very pro-business development. This is not anything other than increasing profit margins for the developer. This does not have any benefit to the town and the village, other than, of course, added residence, but at high market rate. And so, it really is, it comes down to, with all the controversy around this project, and of course, the issues with traffic, et cetera, et cetera, that have been discussed. This, actually, if it's passed, is quite a slap in the face. It can happen. So I'm asking the IDA, please not vote positively on this motion. Thank you.
I am a resident of Fishkill, but I am, I'll speak later. I'm speaking on behalf of the Honorable Greg Titino, Fishkill Town Council Member. Please allow my comments to reflect my opposition to the request made by the applicant in this matter. In my opinion, the specifics and parameters of this development proposal morally preclude the project from receiving tax benefits for this project. The project, as it has been approved, includes more than 55 luxury residential units. The project does not include tax provisions for affordable housing, workforce housing, veteran housing, or senior housing, all of which are more pressing housing needs in our area during this time of prolonged housing crisis. Likewise, the proposal was modified to eliminate initial plans to include commercial space in the development. As such, this project neither creates an appreciable number of jobs in our community, nor does it cater to the housing needs of the average village of Fishkill taxpayer. Given these facts, it is my belief that approving the application before you would constitute a gift of public funds to the developer and set a terrible precedent that even development projects, which are unwanted by the public and do not address the needs of the community, can receive tax benefits, which would be better extended to development projects which will make an appreciable difference. I urge this body to consider these facts and deny the application. Thank you, Honorable Greg Titino.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Anne Machado, M A C H A D O. This is I get 16 Weston Avenue in the village of Fishkill. I am also the village of Fishkill trustee. Since 2009, at a time when new construction projects were very popular in southern Dutchess. At that time, there was a housing boom, and the Jackson Crossing applicant bought the parcel of land, including the lot or another complex, now sits. A historic structure was demolished, and Jackson Crossing had a concept in place that would have resulted in 14 units per acre, 26 units altogether. One might even consider that that idea would have been an affordable building project. But the project got put on hold. And while his project was no longer a concept in motion, other projects were moving on full force. The feral communities, Toll Brothers was adding townhomes in three different locations in the adjacent town. New commercial and retail projects were being built and adding to businesses and growth along the Route 9 corridor. Meanwhile, your applicant had left their project on pause. 2021 brought a zoning change to the village, and in 2023, Jackson Crossing decides to come out of hibernation to build a not-so-unique concept to an already thriving village, where three other pedestrian-friendly rental housing options already exist, none of them who receive a pilot exemption. The Jackson Crossing project concept had changed and doubled in size and had gone through a few different identities of mixed use, commercial, retail, since its original concept, finally settling in a luxury for-profit rental community. Suddenly, 10 years later, Jackson Crossing is ready to help solve the housing crisis, after many others already did. Despite community opposition, our planning board approved this project, and now here we are, as Jackson Crossing requests your agency to award tax incentives that the rest of our community will have to observe. Consider the possibility of a 10% population increase to our village. 200 more people that will be entitled to village, in-town police, fire protection, and an already constrained county-wide ambulance EMS workforce crisis. 200 more people who will be enjoying our parts at the expense of the remaining tax base. Job creation? Jackson Crossing plans to have a total of 2.5 permanent jobs to be phased into post-project completion, not even qualifying them to the bare minimum threshold of three full-time employees for your IDA requirements. Jackson Crossing claims they will offer market rate rentals upwards of $3,700, $500 to $700 more than current village rentals. And no doubt that rent will increase over the next 10 years. The IDA has supported many projects, and I have read summaries for them all. Four words like multi-use, commercial, retail, medical, childcare, warehouse, hospitality, tourism, affordable housing, and income restricted are the descriptions pertaining to those projects I have read about, who seek all three portions of the tax incentives. There are only two IDA projects that refer to their type of business as commercial housing. One is Fox Run. However, that applicant has only sought the mortgage tax exemption and the sales tax request, not the pilot portion. There's only one other commercial housing project on the current list of IDA projects, and there's 26 of them. Jackson Crossing seeks all three options, a project that doesn't offer retail business, it only offers luxury for-profit housing. Having reviewed your criteria, the Jackson Crossing project does not serve as a benefit to an already thriving village committee, community, and offers no contribution other than added tax burden. This project is for-profit commercial housing and is located in an area where strong economic growth already exists in an already existing walkable community. Unable to meet the minimum threshold of permanent anticipated job growth citing 2.5 SPEs, an inability to offer competitive market rate rentals for our area, and there is no attached independent market study to demonstrate the need for housing, and little public support. Due to the above reasons, I ask the IDA to carefully review this application and not approve due to failure to meet your criteria. Also, I just wanted to mention that it is noted that Chairman Dean has recused himself from this process. However, after reading past meeting minutes from other projects, I would be remiss to not mention that Chairman Dean has stated the following in reference to a different project. This is in reference, this is right out of the Board of Directors meeting from November 13, a High Park project, tourism project, NRI, was on the agenda right before Jackson Crossing. Chairman Dean clarifies, in reference to the NRI project in High Park, the intent of taxing jurisdiction input on deviated pilots, and continues to state that while the IDA values the input of the taxing jurisdictions, their consent of a pilot is not required for the Board to move forward with an approving project. Shortly thereafter, Chairman Dean recuses himself as the next item for discussion was Jackson Crossing, but I'm sure those words held true for the people in attendance at that meeting. I hope you value the concerns you have heard here from today from our citizens and local officials, and commit to a fair process without bias in making your determination.
Thank you to the IDA and to the wonderful comments from the elected officials. I don't want to belabor any points that have been made already. I just want to talk about an observation that I had, and then talk a little bit about affordable housing. In the application, there's a page that allows the applicant to check off boxes to indicate what community benefit the project has. This page was blank. I think that was an oversight, but that's also indicative as well about how this project feels as a community member. I don't have confidence in the plan for staffing for creating jobs in the community. I don't see a clear plan of how recruitment would happen in the community for the full-time positions or for the construction jobs. There's no recreational space on this property for the community. There's also no retail space for the community. And most importantly, I think, there is not an affordable housing component, or senior housing, or workforce housing. According to the 2020 census, in the village of Fishkill, 57% of rented households paid more than 30% of their household income court's rent. That means that they are rent burdened. We also have an aging population, with 24.9% of our residents ages 65 or older, and that's compared to an overall rate of 19.9% in Dutchess County. The 2022 Duchess Housing Needs Assessment estimated that 108 interventions would be needed per year to catch up on unmet needs of renters making $50,000 or less annually. That 2022 survey said at least 2,155 units in total would be needed, and that's 2022. I wonder what they would say today. So looking at the question of the tax reduction, over the course of 10 years, the applicant is asking for a reduction The 2022 Housing Needs Assessment gave the figure of $1,066 as the median affordable rent in 2019. With inflation, let's be generous and say that's $1,500 today. is 816 months of affordable rent. Putting it another way, that's 68 years of affordable rent. And that's a hell of a lot of money that's going into the pockets of developers and not into the community. The only way this project will be completed is with public dollars. That's the point of pilot, the investment in the community. And these are dollars that, in this case, could otherwise serve a greater number of residents in Dutchess County. There must be a far greater public good for these dollars than what the applicant is proposing with this plan. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Clark Frankel. I live at 36 Gary Avenue, about 20 feet from the site. Sorry, I don't have prepared remarks, and I am not that knowledgeable on every aspect of these processes. You know, if I found myself on the side of the developers, I could appreciate seeking to pay lower taxes and maximizing my profit margins. But when I looked at some of the details and saw the rates of reduction, my jaw rather dropped. I mean, I think this project would be better if there was affordable housing. I think it would be better if there were commercial spaces involved. There's not, that's where we are. 50% less in sales and mortgage taxes the first year, 50% off the second, 50% the third. It made me think about how many couch-surfing tenants I would need to bring into my home and pay 50% less in taxes, I consider. Is the project important enough to the community that some tax benefits would be appropriate? I don't know. I think that's a good question. If they were, I thought it would be in the realm of 5%, 10%. Seeing the numbers involved, I think the $1.2 million over 10 years could be better used by the community. I have two young children who that would be entering the public school system. The school system needs tax dollars. I was totally unaware of the rising cost for ambulances. Should we need an ambulance, I certainly hope one will show up in a timely fashion.
Okay.
So while I sort of understand the context in which this is being proposed, I agree with what was previously said about this essentially being a gift of public funds to the developers. So I think it should not proceed. Thank you.
This is Karen Finnegay, I live at 107 Wheaton Avenue, Fishkill. F I N N E G A N. 107 Wheaton W H E A T O N Avenue in Fishkill. I also don't have prepared remarks, but I wanted to kind of piggyback off of what you just said, because I just shared this story with a meeting with public officials on Saturday. I'm a member of the group Keep Fishkill Beautiful. We've worked to stop two large developments like this in the past 15, 20 years. This was the only one that we tried our hardest, and we did not succeed. I think that the officials who approved this are now in the find-out phase, but I do think that I'm very grateful that I hear the voices now speaking up for the tax break, which really is insult to injury. In 2019, no, it was before that, it was 2016, I had a child who suffered a horrible asthma attack in the middle of the night, and she was literally not breathing. And it was about 4:00, 3, 4:00 in the morning, and she was just covered in vomit, and we were calling the ambulance. And I just remember her, like, her little hand coming up like this to show that she's getting, like, no oxygen, nothing, right? And so, we're waiting for the ambulance. And the ambulance came, picked her up, and just said, "Don't even try to follow us, because we're going to be going as fast as we can." And I was like, "Well, I am absolutely going to try and follow you, and I will say that that ambulance is moving so fast that with my foot on the floor, I couldn't keep up." If that had happened at 4:00 in the afternoon as opposed to 4:00 in the morning, I would have buried the child, because it was that close. Having this development here, it's a done deal. It is what it is. But I will tell you, I don't want to hear anymore about the fact that it's going to bring, people are going to, you know, businesses are going to thrive with it and all this nonsense. I mean, that was the argument from the beginning. We all know it's not true. Like, you can't even get through Fishkill on an afternoon, because there are so many people here, you know, using the restaurants, and certainly more above that is just trying to get to and from. You know, and now the fact that my tax dollars, which could be paying for those ambulances, are going to be channeled to, potentially channeled to, this enormous unwanted project is really kind of horrific. And the fact that this is maybe the third or fourth time that I have spoken, and the only reason there is not, like, standing room only in this room is because this meeting is being held in the middle of the day when people have to work. And there are people here who I know took off from work in order to be here. So I do hope that we are heard this time. Like, it is really important that this not be done. Thank you.
I am a town official legal resident for over 30 years. I'm a former town official council member and a resident who has paid sales taxes, mortgage, county, and school taxes for over 30 years, as all legal residents have done in Fishkill. We are here today talking about giving developers breaks, large breaks, breaks that everyday citizens do not get for a very large three-story apartment complex in what used to be a quaint village of Fishkill, but is becoming unrecognizable due to approvals for high-density buildings. We are talking about giving these specific developers, Mr. Stanger, Mr. Tenckelman, exemptions on sales tax, mortgage tax, and a pilot for 10 years. We are talking about this because a few years ago, the village official politicians on the village board, in my opinion, changed the zoning boards in a non-transparent way in the village, which allowed for this project to eventually be approved, all under the radar in the aftermath of COVID, at the opposition of most of the residents in the village and the town official. So the fact that they oppose it today is great, but we wouldn't even be here if the zoning changes weren't made by them. Three remain current on the board. Speaking of non-transparent, the public notice for this hearing did not attach the application. You had to request it. That's not transparent. I got it, though, and read it all. We are all here at 9:30 in the morning, and you will not vote today. You will vote tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. during your next meeting, convenient only to you all, not the public. I would ask that the votes of each member and the decision be made public after the meeting, as it isn't being voted on today. So to recap, why in the world would the IDA even accept this application? This project does not fit into the mission statement for the IDA. The standard should be significantly higher than 2.5 jobs. The application states that they can't build the project without the IDA help. This is not a reason to approve it. If I wanted to buy a really expensive car, like a Ferrari, but I couldn't afford it, can I ask for sales, mortgage, and tax breaks so I could buy it? No, I just wouldn't be able to buy it if I can't afford it. So if you can't afford to build it, then you just shouldn't build it. What is the point of the whole IDA? If you say yes to this, and it only incentivizes 2.5 jobs, that seems crazy. Where does it end? The IDA Chair, Mr. Timothy Dean, has a conflict. It is listed on the application, but it is not specific. When I read Mr. Dean's bio, I read his insurance company is Marshall and Sterling, which is in the same building as Mr. Stanger's brother-in-law's firm in Lockwood. Is that why the application was even being considered? Because they are friends? Please realize that we do not like when privileged developers decide they should be entitled to tax exemptions on the backs of local village residents, and businesses too, who pay taxes, all who pay their fair share of taxes. They should have realized, without these undeserved tax exemptions and pilots, they would not be able to move forward. They don't, then they don't move forward. I respectfully request that the IDA voting members do the right thing for the residents in Fishkill and deny this application. Saying yes will send a message that entitled developers can ask and will receive something that everyday residents don't get, a tax break. If you had the opportunity to read the application, you would have learned that the applicant business is a single-site company established to create this development project. It previously owned other properties, but they have all been sold other than this effort. The LLC was created in 2008. The entity got approvals for apartments built across the street on Jackson, and then sold the site. And the approvals for this effort were obtained in 2024, after several years in the approval process. The application also states the project is not feasible without the requested assistance from the DC IDA. Without this assistance, in this environment, the project would not move forward. They state there exists an extreme shortage of market rate housing in Dutchess County. We have an extreme shortage of affordable housing, not apartments that are $600 or more over the market rate, which would make them not affordable. The application also states it was designed to be inconformity with all existing zoning requirements established by the village official. Again, zoning changes that were changed by the village board in approximately 2021. Without those changes, we wouldn't be here. The application further states, quote, "With vacancy factors so low in Dutchess County, this undertaking is not considered speculative, but one provided an important need in our community." Again, the community does not have a need for overpriced apartments that will receive tax breaks. It needs affordable housing. The project is definitely not needed in our community. The application states it will create 2.5 jobs, one full, three part one. That's it. The application speaks of the difficulty to estimate construction costs. Industry is influx. The amount could be more than 25% or more, which would mean it is more than the 10% they wouldn't have to find, if it's more than the 10%, they wouldn't have to find local workers, and they could use others from far and they could use others from far away who were cheaper. So no local jobs. Subcontractors could be used from far away, blocking local job opportunities. The project was approved by the village planning board headed by the planning chair, who is, in my opinion, embedded with trying to get this project approved from day one. So much so, he was angry at the public. He spoke out against it at public hearings. So if he agrees with this, his one voice should not carry any weight other than that of himself, one man, which is not comparable to the weight of every tax-paying resident in Fishkill who is trusting you to do the right thing tomorrow at your meeting, and vote no. This is not the gap in the village that created hundreds of jobs. This is not dogwood apartments in the town, which seniors all live there in the apartments. They deserve that pilot. Someone who just wants to pay less because they don't have the money should simply realize their project is no longer viable. I hope you will put yourselves in our shoes, shoes that live and work in the village of Fishkill and in the town, and represent the people today, not the greedy developer. They do not deserve any entitlements of special treatment. Lastly, in the letter from Sarah Lee from the IDA regarding this request, the last paragraph of the first page states, "Prior to the issuance of the IDA benefits, pilot and/or bonds, the project applicant is required to make an agreement in lieu of taxes with all local taxing authorities and furnish the DC IDA with a certified copy of all of the agreements in lieu of taxes." I spoke to the Fishkill assessor, who hadn't even heard of this request until I showed it to him, and the town board has no agreement to approve, and it stated publicly at our last town board meeting they were not in favor of it, as did two of the board members today and one, some of the letter, that he was also not in agreement with it. The village mayor spoke against it as well. So why are we here? Please deny this request before you, as it is unneeded and not required, and it should not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I want to fire a question. This is not a question.
Hello, everybody. My name is Carmen Zola. I have...
You have to say Carmine.
Carmen, yeah. C-A-R-M-I-N-E.
Hey, C-A-R.
M-I-A-D. Last name is Zola. M-A-Z-Z-L-O-L-A. I'm a local business owner. I own Stephans right down the street from this project. I would actually ask the IDA to consider approving the project to be developed. It's, I think that that's, is what helps the develop get built, and I think it's a big help for the local businesses. I think that the jobs that it would bring would definitely impact my business, along with many other businesses that I've spoken to throughout the village. We're talking more people in the community, more people that will frequent my establishment, more takeout. I just think it's a positive all around. I think it supports temporary jobs as far as building goes. I think it supports permanent jobs. As far as the 2.5% that I keep hearing about, I'd be glad to hire that 2.5%. So I think that takes care of that problem. That problem will more. I would definitely...
2.5% is 2.5 persons.
2.5 persons, yes, 2.5 persons.
Please, everyone.
Whatever, I would definitely be hiring people from that complex sharing this 2.5% or 2.5 persons. I would be happy to hire them. Sometimes it's hard to get them, so I think it would be a benefit to us. So like I said, it's hard to hire. I would be hiring people, and people will also be supporting me. All around, I think it's a great thing, more housing. I hear the affordable housing. I am in other villages, and sometimes the locals, it's very important that the locals support the businesses. So if you have nice places that people are living in, they establish the places. They support the local businesses. As in, where sometimes the affordable housing doesn't. So if, you know, if you have good homes and good people, that'll support my business and other businesses. I'm all for affordable homes, but I think there's nothing wrong with this project going forward. I think directly, it helps me and other businesses in Fishkill. So I would ask the IDA to please, IDAs, to please consider helping get this project pushed along. That's my opinion. I respect everybody in this room. I respect everybody in this room, just, you know. For me personally, I think it's a good path forward. Thank you very much. Thank you.
IDRI. How are you? And Tim Dean, as already has been stated, had a personal relationship with the applicant. So I listened to the meeting several times, and I just want to cite a couple of things that came to mind for me that are of concern. One of the reasonings for not having commercial in this project was that there was no on-street parking. Anyone who lives here locally can tell you, directly across the street is a very large parking lot that is predominantly empty most times of the day. So I think that it's really kind of inaccurate to just cite that as a reasoning to not have commercial, which would benefit the community. So they also cite that without the pilot, there's a low return for them, not for the residents, for them. All the amenities that are mentioned, the wonderful building materials, the little park that they mentioned, community rooms, those are for residents specific to that complex, not to the community. They cite recreation fees, but in the last application, I believe that they rejected that. Maybe I'm incorrect on that, but that's something that maybe the IDA can look into, or the applicant can answer for us. You know, they cite wanting to bring, you know, any community will thrive with a diverse group of individuals living here. We all know that. Unfortunately, what they're proposing is only a diverse group of people that can afford high rents. The small park that they mentioned is at the intersection, literally at the busiest intersection in our community that is strided with accidents. Three this week, three this week, right within a one-block radius of this area. And major accidents, not just vendor vendors. The market rate, so again, this does not accommodate workforce housing, veteran housing, affordable housing. And the applicant actually said, "If they build it efficiently, they can tailor their rents to be affordable." So I really didn't understand that comment. I mean, that made no sense to me. The rezoning, you know, we've already discussed that here, was indeed, you know, the applicant kind of diverted the question from one of the board members asking about the rezoning and this being a contentious project. I just want to clarify for that particular board member who asked the question, it was indeed a very contentious project for years. For years, the vast majority of residents came here, spoke out against it, and yet the applicant actually diverted that answer to talk about the Jackson House, when indeed, the question really was pertaining to the zoning from 2021, which was changed to accommodate a project such as this. What I found slightly concerning though was, one of the board members also asked, "How does the village feel?" And we now very clearly understand how the village feels. The elected officials, the town officials are strongly opposed to this. And yet, the applicant said, "We've been in discussions with the chairman of the planning board, and you can find the letter in the packet." I couldn't find the letter in the packet, so I'm hoping that that will be made public through the IDA's site. So the village assessor, which was cited in this meeting, is actually the town assessor, and as we've heard, has not been notified. So the communities, and I will agree with the applicant on this, the communities do indeed need housing on all of the spectrum. This is very true. But then he goes on to mention all of those affordable housing, workforce housing, in other towns, not in the village. So it is very, I felt it was a little bit misleading to say, "Yes, in the county, we do need all of these types of housing." But that's not what they're asking for here in Fishkill. And it is inappropriate for the taxpayers of Fishkill to have to subsidize a project like this, adding insult to injury to a completely inappropriate project on this corner. So I close with an appeal to the IDA to reject this application wholly. And think of the residents here in the village and the town that will be paying for this. And I do also want to add one more thing in reference to employment and things. People who are living in this complex are not going to be able to afford, in my opinion, working, you know, locally. I think these are people who are going to have to have jobs down in the city. This is a commuter, you know, this is a commuter project. This is not a community project. So I ask that you fully reject this application. Thank you.